Call to order the, for the Town Fund, General Assistance Sewer and Road Department for fiscal year 2025 to 2026. Can we do a roll call?
Yes. Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee May. Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
You will put me down as, as president without voting.
Okay.
This hearing is again regarding the Elk Grove Township Town Fund like we stated, and Sewer Road Department tentative budget. If there, are there any public comments? Is there any comments by the board?
No.
Nope.
Okay. So I think we're gonna adjourn.
Okay.
I make the motion.
Go ahead.
I make the motion adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We're gonna go call the, call the order. The regular board meeting. Let's do the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Perns.
Present.
Supervisor Bussie.
I'm present at my end of the vote.
No, it's time for a public comment. Next, we have the consent agenda. This is for the authorization for payroll and bills, Town Fund, General Assistant, Assistance Road Department and Sewer, plus the supervisors' responsibilities, Social Services, Employment Center, Food Pantry, Youth Services, Adult and Family Counseling, Transportation and Financials. Can I get a motion to approve the authorization of payroll bills and the supervisors' responsibilities?
So move. Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
Supervisor Bussie.
Then next, we have the, the discussion and potential action on approval of minutes from February 24th. Is there any discussion?
No.
Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Nierdowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Perns.
Aye.
We have no presentations tonight. And now for the elected officials' monthly reports. The assessor?
You have my written report, but I want to add to that because the assessment in Cook County is always an ongoing proposition. Last week, I was in Glimington Normal for the Illinois Property Assessment Institute Spring Conference, which was extraordinarily well-attended, and it brings a smile to my face because, as you know, I have been an active member of the Cook County Township Assessors' Association for over 30 years, even serving as its president. And very often, in our industry, they say, "Well, as a Cook County assessor, township assessor, you don't assess. What do you do?" So we always kind of felt like the stepchild, and it almost has become a mission for me to explain to them that we hold the unique position of being a taxpayer advocate. And it's never more important than it is right now with Governor Pritzker talking about the elimination of township. That was a major discussion at the conference. You'd have to understand where would the thousands of residential taxpayers in Elk Grove go to get assistance with their exemptions, with their appeals, with their certificates of error? So obviously, that was a major discussion down there. And as you know, the Cook County Township Assessors Association is totally nonpartisan. We work for the good of all the taxpayers in Cook County, and it was absolutely a delight that there was recognition specifically given to the township assessors of Cook County at the conference. Our president, Oak Park Township Assessor Ali El Safar, who has done a magnificent job leading the organization, was awarded the honor of the Marshall Thoreau Award. Most of you are too young to remember that Marshall Thoreau was the township assessor in Wheeling many, many, many years ago, and it's always been the highest honor that can be bestowed on a township assessor. I was very honored to receive it many years ago. So to see Assessor El Safar get it, and so, deservingly so. So that was number one. Number two, the assessor of Lyons Township, Pat Hines, got the award for leadership and excellence in a large jurisdiction. When I was asked to write a, a letter endorsing that award, it was apparent to me that he has become the conscience of the county as far as assessments go, with marvelous investigative reporting on omitted properties, and so to have two of my colleagues honored in such a way just was so incredibly gratifying. So between the discussions of eliminations of township and the honors that my two colleagues got, there was also almost, oh, a focus on government in general. And it really gets back to really what an effective democracy is all about. And the first thing is an informed citizenry. You can't have a democracy without an informed citizenry. And I know that through my office and the township newsletter and websites, we do our very best with the scarcity of resources that we have to inform our constituents. The other thing is citizen participation. I know that George will echo the volunteers that have served the people of this township, whether it's food pantry, whether it's on various youth committees, et cetera. So it's not enough to just want a seat at the table. You have to bring something to the table. And I'm, I'm absolutely gratified that I've had the experience of working with all of you because I see a lot when I go downstate, and I see what other assessors have to put up with. I see them disrespected, underfunded, and it really is my pleasure to work with this board, knowing that you understand the services that my office gives our taxpayers. That's my report.
Thanks.
Thank you, Connie.
Thank you, Connie.
Yeah, I mean, of all the, all the offices and everything we have, I mean, yours is the most frequented by our, our community, so yeah, you're super important. Next, we have the clerk.
I just have one FOIA from last month, and they requested information from the last four fiscal years, including annual budget and levy, paycheck stubs, timesheets, audited financial statements, monthly statements of all expenditures, and our most recent decennial report. And Administrator, Administrator Manzo got all that information to them, so thank you.
Excellent. That was a lot of stuff, huh?
Yeah.
And supervisor?
Yeah, um, I would like to thank you for hosting the meeting here today. I'll be back in a couple of months, then, back in the office then. So I guess I'll take some of the food, supervisor's report, so I'll walk my way through these, the food lockers that we are installing for the evening pickups for people that can't make it during the day to, to the food pantry. Those, those lockers should be in by April 1st. We changed the location. They're gonna be in the vestibule going into the, the west entry. It's better from a, from a weather point of view, as well as a, as a security point of view. So it's, it's worked out well, a little bit of a change, but I think a good change. Those lockers will be in on April 1st, and I think that's a very good example of the innovation that this board and our staff has shown in terms of addressing the needs of the community. This is very unique, and I don't think any other township does this or has provided this type of additional food pantry accessibility. Second thing is, I sent letters to all the elected officials, expressed any concerns about the legislation that has addressed or is directed at consolidate, eliminating, consolidating, or absorbing the townships. I personally believe that this was forwarded or furthered by the governor as sort of a, a way to kind of cover up another budget that is showing dramatic increases in expenses and expending. And this was just thrown out there as a way to show, "Oh yeah, we're being fiscally responsible." I, I, I don't think it will, I don't think it will succeed, but just as reminded to you all what this legislation is, and I'll sort of let you know where it stands, Senate Bill 2217 was sent back to the Assignments Committee. It will not be going forward at this time. That provided that all townships with populations less than 5,000 would be dissolved or consolidated with an adjacent township or absorbed by the county. That was pushed back, sent back to committee. The bill which is more significant, that is still potentially moving forward, it did not get out of committee, but they've been given an extended deadline for it till April 4th. That, that bill 2020, 2504, it lowers the petition threshold to 5% of the total votes in the last or the most recent township election. It had previously been a requirement of 10%, but now it'd be 5%. It also added, it, it also added the ability of the county boards to initiate a referendum on a county-wide basis to eliminate townships. That's, that is totally unheard of. I mean, that is extraordinarily different than anything we've ever heard in the past and that, and I think that's a major concern of ours that it would be, that that would be, that county would be able to initiate a referendum to eliminate all the townships. It also, as Connie had indicated, would eliminate assessor's office for townships with populations less than 5,000, and that assessor's responsibility would move totally to the county. That bill is still being moved forward. The letter that I sent was basically highlighted the, the value and the importance of townships, and the, and the, the efficiency and the effectiveness given the low dollar amount that is required, and that how the elimination of townships would undoubtedly eliminate a number of the services we provide, or dilute the services we provide, or, 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 or in some ways maybe even what it would do is it would end up making those services, changing those services into something which is not even needed. So it's a, then I also highlighted the fact that we are, we are, we are a much lower cost in terms of providing these services, and that, and that, it, all studies have shown that, that townships are more effective and more cost, more effective in performance and more effective in, 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 in terms of cost than, than a county would be or a village. So I, I also took, in that package, a, a copy of our report that we used for the Mount Prospect presentation, and which I will use for an Elk Grove Village presentation in, in April, and I think that highlighted what I was saying in terms about the, the multitude of services we provide, the value of those services, the effectiveness of those services, and the cost effectiveness of those services. We've heard a response from Senator Murphy. I haven't heard back from anyone else at this point, but we probably will hear in the not-too-distant future, some sort of response. Senator Murphy responded in a positive fashion. I would, I would say that at this particular stage, we need to stay engaged. I think that we cannot take for granted that it will just fade away, and I think that this is gonna be, as it has in the past, the townships are gonna continue to be the government body that is in the, that is in the, the, in, in the, in the limelight or is the focus when it comes to reducing government or bodies, organizations, or costs, even though it is not the, the best way of doing it. In fact, it doesn't really make much sense at all when we, when we're less than 1% of the tax bill. I mean, that's, there's, the savings here is, is minuscule, and the loss of the services associated with it is, it almost makes it criminal that they'd be, that they'd be pursuing this. So that's, that, those letters were sent, and about a week and a half ago. Third thing is the Eco Lane transportation software that we installed went into, went into place on February 19th. I want to thank Izzy and Samantha for doing a great job in getting that up and running. They had their bumps the first week or two, but it seems to have really stabilized out here now. I think it's gonna lead, it is leading already to more efficient and form of dispatching, as well as increasing, I think, availability to seniors and, and the disabled for the transportation services. We're running about, we're, we are anticipating for this month about 800, 900 rides. That is in, in, that's in comparison to what we have seen in the past, the 650 to 700. So we're seeing a significant ramp up now in senior disabled rides as well, too, as we have seen across a lot of our others' social services. I think, I think then what I'd want to address is, the Youth Services has been asked by 59, District 59, to expand the newcomers class to an additional school. They're extremely pleased with the, with the program and with the results that it's generating. And as I said, 57 now has added that to one of the programs they want us to provide as well, too. If you remember, for 59, we're just doing the newcomers. We're focused just on newcomers, and they're expanding that to more schools. And 57, they, they were looking at some of the other programs, and now have added newcomers as well, too, for us to provide and to teach. So Renee and Jen are doing a fantastic job with that. I, I, you know, I would, if any of you have some free time and can work with Renee to maybe will sit in on one of the classes or observe it, I think it would be, I think you'd find it really amazing what they're able to do with kids that can't speak, most cases can't speak any English, and yet they, they, they engage them and they get them involved in a integration process that I think is really unique and outstanding. I'll lead from there. I'll lead right into some of the personnel developments in the Youth Services area. If you remember there, we, we did have a part-time position open. We did hire a gentleman, Danny LaRosa. He'll be starting, I believe, in sometime in April. He'll be doing 20 to 30 hours. He has a master's in social work and was a caseworker at Kenneth Young, and, and I think he's gonna be a great addition. If you remember, we also had Jill, who was our one part-time worker, sort of a flex part-timer that we've, we used in the past. She is retired, and we have replaced her, the flex part-time person, with Jennifer Solis. She's gonna be working maybe 10 hours a, a week. She is, she speaks Spanish and has a master's in public health. Izzy has, and Renee both met, and Jen both met with these individuals during the interview process, and both of them, all three of them felt very, very strongly about their, their ability to add to our program. And as I said, with the newcomers class taking up a lot of time and a lot of effort, being able to provide some additional staffing capabilities, and with Jen having the, you know, the, the bike safety for the summer, we needed people to be able to assist in running not just the newcomers, but some of the other courses that we do at the schools and at the township on a regular basis. And, and so, and then also, too, as a backup, if someone's sick or someone's not available, with two people, that would mean that we just couldn't do the program. Now, we've got two additional part-time, we could shift one or, one of them into a, one of those roles so that we could continue to provide the course or provide the instruction. That's Youth Services. So we filled the position that you approved, and we've replaced Jill who retired, and we're fully staffed there. On the Adult and Family Counseling, we had approved another part-time position, but we also had to, we also were looking for somebody to replace Janet. If you remember, had to take a leave of absence due to an inability she felt to really provide the hours we needed, because she was overtaxed with her job at the, at the, I think it's District 50, 69, I believe it is, or no, District 214. And, and so, we did find a replacement for her, a, a part-time, and it's a, a Spanish speaker, Juan Barron. He is a social worker, he's got two master's degrees, and he has experience in clinical therapy. If this goes well, I think he's open to consider a full-time position. So I'm really excited us having a male Spanish speaker with, with the educational background, the experience that he has. I think this is a real nice addition to that team, and it, and, and, you know, it, some people, some guys will prefer to be with a male therapist, and that broadens our ability to, to kind of meet the, the variety of needs of the, of the people we have coming in. We, we have a broader reach now in terms of language and in terms of gender. We still have a part-time position open, the one that you approved. This was, this one, Juan was a part-time position replacement, so we will still be looking at adult family counseling for additional part-time therapists or counselors. I would point out on that as well, too, that if you remember, in adult family counseling, we have, we have three social workers if we include Danny now. So that would be, I mean, we include Juan, and that would be Karina, Luanne, and Juan. And Luanne, obviously, is a, is a clinical, I mean, has, has the highest, the highest of licensing, highest license, license that, that they have in that, in that, in the social work area. And they have a different certification than the counselors do. We have two counselors, Priya and Carmen, and they, they will have a licensed professional counselor, LPC, and they have a licensed clinical professional counselor, LCPC. Priya just got, completed her license for the professional counselor, LPC, which is a great accomplishment. And I think Carmen is gonna be taking the licensing exam for the clinical professional counselor. So we're seeing a significant increase in terms of our, our, our licensing levels, which I think is, is really great, and it's something we've been encouraging all of our social workers and counselors to pursue, because it improves the quality of the product that we provide here, the counseling services that we provide. One other area of personnel is in the food pantry. We still have a part-time position open there. We are looking for somebody who would do part-time to do inventory and volunteer coordination, leaving Kylie more time to actually manage and oversee things, with Chris as her backup, part-time backup. But this person would be providing support and, and work in an area that is more nuts and bolts and frees up Kaylee for, for more leadership and strategic, and strategic vision type, type, type work. Let's see, the other thing, I'll go from there, from personnel to events. Unfortunately, the DMV day that we had scheduled was postponed. That's due to internal challenges related to the Real ID deadline that the, that the Secretary of State's mogul, that the Secretary of State has put out there in terms of a deadline, and it was originally scheduled for July 15th at the township, but that's been postponed, a new date has not been determined yet. Mount Prospect also had their, their DMV day postponed as well, too. So we will follow up on that with everyone once we get a new date. We are taking, the people that had signed up, we are putting on a, on a, a waitlist, you know, in order when they, when they signed up, so that when it's, when it's reestablished, we'll go back to them and give them the first shot at the, at the appointments. There's a new date for the, I think the Community Character Counts, what is, what is that? CCC. Anyway, they, they have a Pack the Pantry event at the Jewel on Beisterfield every year. The original date of May 17th has been moved up to May 10th due to conflict, a conflict with the collection location. There'll be more information available on the, on our social media. This is a yearly donation event, and it, it really is beneficial to our food pantry. So if you guys see, you can track that, see when the date is, and, and participate in that, that would be great, having a presence there, and maybe even tell Mandy when you're going, and maybe get some pictures taken of you guys participating in it. Other scheduled events, election is April 1st, the annual town meeting is April 8th at 7:00 o'clock at the town hall. Everyone needs to be there. Community Egg Hunt out on the, on the, the Bike Safety Course, the Challenge Course, weather permitting, will be April 12th at 10:00 a.m. And then the Community, the Community Empowerment Fund fundraiser, CEF fundraiser, will be on the May 29th at, at 34th downtown Mount Prospect, and that's the primary fundraising event for CEF. I think the last thing that I would mention here is I just would point out that our budget, which you're gonna be approving tonight, is a, is a, is a overall a balanced budget, but I would particularly want to point out that, that the Town Fund and on the GA Fund, on the Town Fund, we will end up, this year it looks like with a surplus of maybe 200,000. Probably will be more than that because we always have to, we always have to overbudget a little bit, given the uncertainty on some of the line items. So it will probably be more than 200,000 that we end up having a surplus that will go into the reserve, which is currently around $1 million. The reason for the, for the surplus is that construction costs have gone down, and they more than offset the personnel, the increased personnel costs. And I'm not expecting any extraordinary expense this coming year. So it should be a very solid balanced budget for the Town Fund with probably a surplus and maybe an increase in our reserves. On the, on the GA budget, there you will see a, we will have a deficit on that, but that's really not a deficit. What, what we're really, what you're really seeing there, the reason why it's about $350,000 it looks like in a deficit, it's really an overbudget for home relief, GAE, and those things, because we never know where it gets, so we will overbudget that. And then the program support, this is for programs such as additional funds for the food pantry for food, and other programs that we think may come up, and a lot of times we don't use all of that or much of it at all. And then we also tend to underbudget for the revenue. The revenue always seems to come in higher. I'm not sure exactly why, but historically it does. And then we also have, we also have a, an improved, and we have been doing better with donations and for, for things like that, for the food pantry and some of the other items in that area. So net-net, it, it appears to be a deficit, but it will undoubtedly, historically, not be a deficit. Do keep in mind, though, that that's the one fund where our reserve right now is 1.4 million, and we probably will end up, even though we're showing a deficit, we'll probably end up with a surplus at the end of the fiscal year. We will be using some of those funds for these, for these projects that the legis, new legislation allows us to do, where we can use GA funds for other social services purposes. And as you know, we've done that a couple times, though, for one-time events. We will probably continue to do that because our reserve is so full, and we're likely gonna be adding to that again this year, that they'll be on, I'm sure on a couple occasions, we will draw from it in a, in a non-budgeted basis, we'll draw from the reserves to support a program that needs some additional support, whether it be a bus, or whether it be a cargo van for the food pantry and, and those things. It, it, it may be whatever that is, that that should be kept in mind as well, too. Otherwise, it's a long-winded report. Since I've only got a couple of these supervisor reports left, I'm gonna make them as long as I can. And if there's any questions, I can take your, take your questions.
No. No, I just wanted to say that when you went back, back when you were talking about the Eco Lane... about the Eco Lane. I was here last week and Samantha and I had a little talk and actually she gave me a whole demo of the, uh, system and everything and it was, it was actually really cool and it's, uh, you know, long overdue, obviously, you know. It looks like an excellent system.
Yeah, yeah. I think it moves, I think it really helps the bus drivers too. I think, Izzy, they're becoming much more comfortable with, aren't they? And, and actually embracing it now?
Um, y- yeah, there was a little bit of a learning curve, um, but we are doing much, much better. Um, the bus drivers have just a couple of stops that they're aware of as they get pulled out of the, of the township, um, and then we add to that as the day goes on. So, um, rides, people who are finishing up at the doctor's office or at the grocery store, instead of being pre-scheduled, um, where it kind of limits where we can be, it just shoots it out to the closest driver, um, without causing a delay for the next pickup. So it's actually super cool. Um, you know, we've been doing this by hand for a very long time. Um, there was a lot of emotions. Um, we make really close relationships with our residents. We want to make sure that they need, they get to where they need to go. Um, and so there was some challenge, um, but where they're doing really well. They're doing really well. And I think just as of, um, a couple of days ago, in the very beginning, I had to be, you know, involved in it, some of the day-to-day, just kind of making some of those decisions, um, on the fly, because I did transportation in the very beginning of my career here, so I could kind of understand it a little bit. Um, but now I, I sit back and I just, every once in a while will listen. They're solving all those problems on their own. Bus drivers are communicating with each other as well as the front office. Um, they're coming into the building a little sooner. They're getting time to, um, put gas in the car. We've got scheduled breaks, which normally they didn't get. Um, they would just have to go use the restroom or eat lunch like on the go between pickups. So this is much easier, cleaner and safer for everybody.
I'd like to say too, just, uh, to have a follow-up on what Connie said. When I was going through putting the report together for the presentations with, um, Mount Prospect and now, uh, in the near future with Elk Grove Village, I was amazed. I mean, I knew we had accomplished a lot, but I was amazed by how much was accomplished in, in terms of expanding and adding new programs, uh, to meet, uh, the growing needs in our community. I mean, it was, it was phenomenal what we done and, and which, when I say we've done, and I mean we, is not just me, but the whole board here. And that's why, you know, we received the award for, for Supervisor and Township of the Year, Illinois Township of the Year, because of the accomplishments that we, that we saw in social service, youth services, adult family counseling, the food pantry, senior services across the board, um, what has been added and what has been expanded this year, when it's needed, um, has really been phenomenal. And, and I really thank the board for the, for the, the work they've done. I mean, the experiences board has, the, the performance they've generated and the fiscal responsibility that they've shown, uh, along, along, along the way these last four years, I really, really appreciate. Um, and, and I've got a fantastic state and I've had a great, great board and, um, and it's always good to have good, good people around you. That makes you look good too, even when you're only mediocre, but you guys have been great. So I want to thank you all for that.
All right. Thanks, George. So can I get a motion to approve the Township elected officials' monthly reports?
So moved. Second.
Uh, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Purns.
Aye.
Okay, so, uh, there's no correspondence and we have no old business. Uh, now onto the new business. The, uh, the budget and appropriation ordinance 2025-01 Town Fund, General Assistance and Sewer. Just want to state that, um, according to the, uh, the rules, the laws, we have to have this, uh, budget posted. It was posted in the Daily Herald and it was made public, um, and for the appropriate time. And so now we're going to, uh, vote on it. The only, there's only some minor changes, um, in, in the budget, uh, based on year-to-year, and that's just to make up for some differences, uh, that we need to make up for, especially with, uh, property situation. Um, and also, you know, of the, of the, the budget covers the town fund, general assistance and sewer, but just to state that the sewer is not really budgeted, it's a, it works on a different system of reimbursement by the villages and cities. So, um, can I get a motion to pass the budget and appropriation ordinance 2025?
So moved. Second.
Uh, is there any discussion?
No.
No. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Purns.
Aye.
All right, the, the second budget, uh, we're going to, uh, look at again is the appropriation ordinance 2025-02RD. That's for the road department, um, and there was really no changes to that. Can I get a motion to?
So moved.
Pass. Second. Uh, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Purns.
Aye.
Um, the next resolution, um, is for the, uh, is, is number, sorry, 2025-03. It's adopting a policy for Elk Grove Township to provide services eligible under Section 85-13 of the Township Code for General Assistance pursuant to Public Act 103-0192. Um, this ordinance, uh, it pretty much clarifies the original ordinance that's in place. Um, and this really is to confer, concur with state law, which is, gives a supervisor authority with boards signed up to allow transfers of money from general assistance to other areas in need. Can I get a motion to pass this?
So. So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Purns.
Aye.
So, um, the next resolution is the, uh, 25-04 declaring certain township property, real, uh, real, uh, sorry, real property as surplus property. Um, we've talked about this, uh, the past, there's just a section of property out front, uh, that the village needs access to, needs to, to actually acquire so they could do the, uh, construction that they're doing in relation to the intersection out front. Uh, this is necessary because the, it has to be declared a surplus property first, uh, in order for us to be able to go ahead and sell it to the village. Can I get a motion to accept?
So moved. Second.
Roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Purns.
Aye.
And, um, and lastly, the, um, the, sorry, the last resolution is 25, 2025-05, and that's the opposing township consolidation into county government. Uh, George talked about that, uh, in his, in his report there. Um, and, um, it's, uh, you know, it's a, a resolution, obviously, that we all, you know, agree on in order to communicate to the state. Can I get a motion to accept this?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Purns.
Aye.
Okay. Um, next, there's no discussion. Oh, I'm sorry. Is there any discussion? Putting the words in your guys' mouths. There's no discussion. So don't even ask. No, uh, is there anything, uh, any discussion or comments, uh, by the trustees? Sorry.
No.
Okay. Um, so next, uh, we have, uh, executive session. Um, the executive, executive, executive session is necessary to, um, uh, to talk about employee compensation. Now, there's, uh, that's according to, uh, the, uh, the state guidelines for compensation of specific employees, uh, and deliberation of salary schedule. So, uh, that needs to be an executive session. So, um, I'm going to make a...
You just have to read those numbers. Sorry.
So let me read the official. I move, uh, that the board enter into closed session under the Illinois Open Meetings Act, specifically 5 ILCS 120 slash 2 and 5 ILCS 120 dash 2, to discuss the compensation performance and employment of specific employees of the public body, as well as to deliberate concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. I thought I already said that. Um, okay. Um, so, um, I'd like to, would anybody like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to motion to, make a motion to reserve, resume the meeting.
So moved.
Make a motion.
Second.
We have to, a roll call. Roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Present.
Trustee Keenley.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Or, or I. Wait, was, the motion is to?
Roll call.
To resume the meeting.
Resume this meeting.
Present to get back in, it's a present.
So just making sure everyone came back.
Okay, present.
Present.
Okay.
So then we have to.
You have to say what you did and then vote on it.
Just general, no specifics.
Yeah, um, so a, um, in the, uh, and under the employee compensation, um, discussion was made concerning the, uh, the raises and the plans for the next, uh, for the next budget year, um, uh, for the employees and staff. Can I get a motion to accept the?
So moved. Second.
Uh, roll call.
Trustee Narodowski.
Aye.
Trustee Keenley.
Aye.
Trustee May.
Aye.
Trustee Purns.
Aye.
Um, I, okay, so that's it. So I'd like to make a, a motion to adjourn the meeting. Anybody would like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting? I'll make the motion to adjourn the meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.